All right, everybody. Here we go. It's the March 6th, 2019 council meeting. We will open the session. Mr. John Homelbeck, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for all of the blessings that you've bestowed Canyon Lake and the surrounding communities. We are grateful for our freedom. We are grateful for the ability to participate in self-governance. We're thankful for our political leaders. Grant them wisdom tonight as they work through the various issues facing the city of Canyon Lake. And please continue to protect and bless our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. John, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Sir, please join me in saluting our great flag and ready begin.
Our alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bonner?
Here.
Councilmember Castillo?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Green?
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Crowe.
Do I have an approval of the council agenda?
Mayor, if you don't mind, before we approve the agenda, can we please take a look at business item number six and move that up top?
Okay, we will do that.
Put a motion on the floor for that?
I read the second.
All in favor? Oh, madam, call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What we'll do is we'll go to the ceremonial matters first, and then we will jump to item six. So Jim, Randall, chamber report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First off, I would like to let everyone know we have a new owner of bombshells in the town center. They're having a grand reopening celebration on Saturday from 12 to 2:00. The new owner is Chrissy McNuttin, and there will be food, music, and rapid prizes, and special offers, and big discounts available all day. The next item is Driver's Choice Insurance, formerly Canyon Lake Insurance, located next to Prestige Golf Cars, will hold a grand opening Thursday, Friday, March 14th and 15th from 10:00 to 4:00. The Chamber will perform a ribbon cutting at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, March 14th.
Will there be a ribbon cutting for the reopening?
No, they didn't ask for a ribbon cutting.
Okay, got it. Got it.
Also, on March 16th, our annual golf tournament. Still not too late to sign up.
We have a team in. We have a team in.
All right. We have some great hole-in-one prizes. There's $10,000 sponsored by Christine Gonzalez and Kim England of Point Mortgage. Yamaha and Blue Water Realty is sponsoring a Yamaha YXE 1000R, and golf, a golf cart from Prestige Golf Cars. And at this point, we have, I think our last count the other night was a little over 100 golfers, which is a good turnout.
Good turnout.
And I told the mayor earlier, the weather is supposed to be 71, puffy clouds, 38 degrees, or 38 percent humidity, so the grade should be going pretty quick, and the wind is only up to three miles an hour. So it should be...
No excuses.
No, no, none at all. None at all. Also, I'm proud to welcome new members that we've got to the Chamber. The Urban Craft Eatery, Nothing But Cakes in Medifie, California Coast Credit Union, Chase Bank, Christine Gonzalez, Inc., California Motorsports, Anderson Chevrolet, which is formerly Lake Chevrolet. I actually had the privilege to go over and meet the new owner. They own six dealerships around Havasu City. And he's actually moving here. One of his managers is, the day I was there, was leaving the meeting to go look at a place and rent here in the lake. So, and the last one is Driver's Choice Insurance Agency.
Go ahead.
So we've boosted the numbers quite a bit lately. Last item is we have a meet the candidates for the POA Tuesday, April 9th at 6:00 p.m. at the Magnolia Room of the Country Club.
What was that date?
April 9th, 6:00 p.m. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Awesome work. Okay, we were gonna do Student of the Month, but he was not available for tonight, so our intent is to recognize the Student of the Month, which I had already done at that function down in Lake Elsinore Lakeside High School, for the joint meeting that we're gonna be having March 26th at 1,800 hours at the POA's facilities. It'll be a joint meeting between City Council, the POA Board, and our both managers. And we hope, we're looking very forward to that. We'll be recognizing him at that, as well as one other recipient of a recognition award. So with that, I'd like to move into recognition of the Canyon Cowboy. If you would please come up. We have several things that will be given to you tonight, both from the city, Kevin Jeffries' office, and Melissa Melendez's office, if you would come up, and we will start the presentations.
As well as the chamber...
Excuse me. As well as it, you gotta put this mic up close. So you guys, everybody at home says they can't hear us, so we're gonna try to make it as best we can. So let's go with Melissa's, Melendez's office, please, and we'll end up with us being last, since you're local. And, but again, congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Amanda from Assemblywoman Melissa Melendez's office, and we just want to congratulate you guys on winning not one but two awards, for best burger and for the best casual dining. So congratulations, and we look forward to all the new things that you guys have planned for the community.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim. Very quick. That was good.
Okay, from the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to give you an award of excellence presented at Canyon Cowboy in honor of being selected Best Casual Restaurant and Best Burger in the Inland Empire Magazine.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries has one here someplace, but we're not sure where it's at. So if we don't catch it, well then...
Oh, I just saw it.
It'll catch you. This is ours?
No, there was another one I saw.
Yeah. Okay.
Heard it.
All right. Anyway, from the Board of Supervisors District One, Mr. Jeffries has again honored you guys. And I will open it up, but my fingers are kind of sticky. And I hope it doesn't fly out. Recognition of Best Casual and Best Burger by the Inland Empire Magazine.
Thank you.
Now, ours is a little more elaborate because we framed it.
And we love you guys.
We have such a high budget, but we're able to have these wonderful frames that can go on the wall and show, again, it's a certificate of recognition presented to the Canyon Cowboy for Best Casual Restaurant and Best Burger.
Based on the Inland Empire Magazine.
And again, thank you, guys, for being in our community. Thank you for being part of our family, and we just wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Just like to say thank you for all the recognition, and we're just really proud to be a part of this great community, and so that's, we're very excited. So thank you very much. All right. Well done. Just to let everyone know, here's the first council meeting that we've done. We're doing a livestream. That means we're out on other platforms that are in addition to our cable network, so those who want to tune in to see our council meetings in the future, or tonight, you can stream it live, play it back, catch all the good words that we say, hopefully maybe provide some positive critiquing, and we'll go forward. So anyway, that's it for the recognition. Now we'll go to the public comments. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the statement?
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you're commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. I have a few cards today.
Okay.
So we'll start with Amanda Fisher.
Welcome, Amanda. Again!
Again, yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda, Assemblywoman Melissa Melendez's office, and I just wanted to let everyone know about our town hall meeting on Friday morning from 10:00 to 11:00 at the MSJC campus in Monty, room 3020. There's a phone number to RSVP, so if you can do a like 2 or 10, please let us know. I'll put the flyer back on the table, so you guys can all take a look at it.
Thank you. And for those who haven't attended Melissa's town halls, they're very informative, very two-way conversations, both between her and what's going on, very informational. Okay.
Next, we have Darcy Burke.
Darcy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. I just wanted to give you three quick updates. One is that Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District will be hosting the Splash Into Spring event. It's an annual event. It's held at our headquarters in Lake Elsinore, and that's Saturday, March 23rd, from 10:00 to 1:00, and it's free. There'll be tours and activities for the children and all kinds of good things. The other thing that came to our attention this morning was actually that a lot of people are asking how to do business with the water district, and many people don't know that you need to actually register on a website called planetbids.com. It's free to register, but we're encouraging local businesses to register to actually participate, so that when we do have RFPs or requests for proposals available, we can actually try and make it more local than going out of state, which has been most of the responses lately. And lastly, I just wanted to put on your radar that the governor has included the water tax on his budget legislation, and so the Association of Canadian Water Agencies and Elsinore Valley Municipal, as well as Eastern and Western, and basically most of the region, has come up with an alternative. So the water tax, as you recall, may recall, last year made it to the governor's desk and was vetoed. So we're watching that closely, and I want to keep you apprised, and that would not be a fee from the water district. That would be at the benefit of our governor to discretionarily give how he chooses. So I just wanted to alert you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
Next, we have Mr. John Zeitz.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mind going next, but Councilmember Smith asked to... Okay. Okay, I gotta do this.
You admit it. John, you wanna fix them? Go ahead and fix them. Is it okay?
I can fix it.
Okay.
But just, I could fix it if you'd just listen to my prelogue here. Councilmember Smith had asked to move up item six.
Yes, sir.
If we go through this and the consent agenda, we're on item six, and it didn't move up at all. I don't mind sitting down, fixing my glasses, and you go through number six, and then I can come back with the city managers here. Or I can go ahead, if you don't start my three minutes.
Is there, I'm not sure, I'm not following what you're saying. We moved it up for a specific reason.
Yes.
Wanted to go through the formal appointment process?
Yes.
As well as the things that we need to do to make the contract legal?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I understand that. But my concern is if we go through me, then we're gonna go into consent agenda, and you're at number six. You haven't moved anything up as such. And if you want to move them up and have a city manager here, I'd be happy to come back when he's seated there and...
It's our sequence in public comments. We've just taken six and moved it from that. So public comments are now, and we're not moving public comments to behind these. So, John, you're welcome to use your three minutes now for your public comments.
Is his comment on item six? He thought it would be on that.
Yeah, is your item on item six?
No, it would be inappropriate to have it on item six. It's on non-agendized items.
Okay.
For that, so...
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. What I'd like the city council to do is to take a look at your meeting policy and consent agenda. And what I'd like you to do is to allow members of the public to pull consent items. We've done this in the past, and a few months ago, the city attorney and I got into a tiff over my wanting to pull the items, and she wasn't going to allow it anymore. And I think it's very important that the members of the public can do that. I hope it's not just a personal thing, she didn't like me doing it, or didn't like anybody doing it. And the Brown Act is very specific on the need for people to be able to speak. The Brown Act says, let's see if I had my glasses, I could do this better. Every agenda for a regular meeting shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item. Now, when you get into the consent agenda, there is no discussion, not by you. So if it's not pulled, how am I to discuss anything? I have been given a right by the Brown Act to speak on any agendized item. Consent agenda is an agendized item, but you can't speak on it unless it's pulled, which becomes the next item on your agenda. And so not having that is what she has in effect, ineffectively done, is to stifle me or anybody else from speaking out. I want to speak out on the item on your consent agenda today, the item of the sign. I want to speak on that issue, item number four. But unless it was pulled by you, I wouldn't be able to do that. So we're restricted to do that. And then she says, you know, well, you can do it under the public comments. I can't do it under public comments, because you, under public comments, you can't talk about an agendized item. So she's got to, as soon as they catch 22. In effect, monthly, anybody speaking out on something, and congratulations, Jeremy, on getting something on the consent item. I spent years on there trying to get something on the agenda itself, and we took a long time to be able to get, well, I got the mayor to agree, I can get it on. You know, they got something on, you got something that's gonna be done and paid for, and basically without discussion. And so that's, I'll leave it at that and go fix my glasses.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have two more cards, but they're requests to speak on item six and item eight, so we'll hear those comments at the time that you call those items.
All right. We'll do so. All right, thank you. City Attorney, would you read the statement, please?
Yes, Mayor. I assume that we're now on item number six.
Item number six. Yes, sir.
So the Brown Act requires that prior to the, any final action, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of a recommendation for final actions on the salaries, salary schedules, compensation paid in the form of benefits of a local agency executive. So I wanted to orally report the final recommendation for the proposed city manager's employment agreement, copies of which are available with the city clerk now. The terms of the agreement are $142,000 in annual base salary, no car or relocation allowance, a $150 monthly cellphone and internet allowance, fringe benefits generally equivalent to those of other city employees, with the following exceptions: no cap on sick leave accrual, 40 hours of vacation time credited upon the effective date, 80 hours of management time credited upon the effective date, which according to the contract would be March 1st. This contract would retroactively appoint the city manager as of that date. In addition, the last item that I'd like to orally report is that if the employee chooses so, he may decline sick leave, which has a value of approximately $1,000 a month, and instead receive $3,000 annual stipend. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So do we have a motion to...
Do we have a public comment? Mr. John Zeitz would like to speak on item six.
All right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you may remember an expense account issued in the past few years that has come up, that we can keep between us on that. The thing that the council did after that in 2017 is do a city equipment policy in September of 2017. Do you recall that, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay. In that policy, it says, "The following policies adopted and amended to ensure that all city council members and management employees presently, the city manager and city clerk, have access to the technology and equipment necessary to effectively perform their jobs. Your city policy gives no more than $60 for a cellphone and $40 for internet. Therefore, sir, unless you're gonna violate your policy," which I think this council has done many times, "you can't get $150."
I believe based on our legal counsel and based on contract negotiations, we had that flexibility.
Mayor, I'd recommend allowing the gentleman to conclude his public comments, and then if you want to take one of the three options available to you, we can, you can...
Got it. I got it. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm just trying to point out, unless you amend your policy, I don't know, sir, how you can just circumvent it for someone, contractually or whatever. I remember some court case where we can't make some changes and some stuff, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like...
Yes.
Would you like me to address the council on that issue?
Thank you.
I was familiar with the cellphone equipment policy, and it was actually one section of the contract that I paid special attention to based off the history of this community. That policy, although in the preamble, it does speak to wanting to ensure that the council and the city administration staff have access to these, all of the policies specifically relate in terms of the amount and how that reimbursement is to be paid out only to the city council. You impose that policy upon yourselves. Obviously, I was not at the dais when those events occurred, but that policy does not in any way prohibit you from approving the contract before you know.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
We'll need a motion in a second if there's no further discussion.
I'll put the motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried with Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Crowe absent to approve the employment agreement with Chris Spann.
Okay, item number two, we need approval of resolution number 2019-6. Madam Clerk, do you need to read it?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, appointing Chris Spann as a city manager, city treasurer, and city clerk.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll motion it.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of resolution number 2019-07. Madam Clerk?
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, updating authorized account signatories and authorizing investment of monies in the local agency investment fund.
I move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution number 2019-08.
It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, updating authorized account signatories for citizens' business bank.
Do I hear a motion?
I move. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you. Item six is concluded. We're gonna take a short break for a photo op.
First of all, let's give our new city manager a round of applause.
Okay. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a very short break to do a photo shot of the new mayor of council, and so that we can get it in the Friday flyer, and then we will resume our council agenda very shortly. Okay? Okay. Welcome aboard. Now you're in the seat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very pleased to be here. I'd like to thank the council. It's actually a very enjoyable application process. I enjoyed getting to know each of you, and I spent quite a bit of time here in the city during the process, and what an amazingly beautiful community Canyon Lake is, and the people here are so warm and welcoming. We've got some challenges, particularly in relation to the budget, but I think it's nothing that we can't solve, and really looking forward to the work ahead with you. I'd also like to introduce my fiancee, Annie, who's in the audience today.
Hi, Ann.
We're getting married next month, and we both look forward to becoming very active in the community, and we'll see everyone out and about.
All right. All right. So we're ready to resume.
You're right.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent calendars?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items. Before we move on to the motion and second, I would like to ask that the council pull item number three from the consent calendar. There's a few minor changes that I would like to state for the record.
Okay. With that being pulled, is there any other items that the council would like to pull? Okay. With that, item three, I guess the other items, we will go ahead and do a roll call on, please. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar with Mayor Protem Aaron Cran's absent.
Okay. Item three, madam clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can have you refer to page 54 of your agenda packets. Under the schedule of future events, I'd just like to clarify that the citizens' emergency response training class was held from March 1st through the 3rd, not the 9th as it states in the minutes, and also the Animal Friends of the Valleys had a donor appreciation event which took place from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Just those minor changes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Can I hear a motion?
I move.
Second, please.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? All right. We'll move on to scheduled events. Go ahead and list the scheduled events, notices, madam clerk. Excuse me. Item seven, sir? I thought, okay, we...
You kind of skipped scheduled events.
Okay. We skipped scheduled events, so we had that. I've got that on... Anyway, that's on the webpage. Just let everyone know out there, all of our viewing land. I don't know how far it is, but welcome. We do have our city webpage up, and we also post events that are affecting the city and involved in the city on both places, so hopefully we'll have more outreach, and please feel free to contact us and let us know how effective we are, and maybe some other things we might be able to do to further get our message out. Okay. Now we're going to move on to business items, and item number seven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is the review of fiscal year 2017, 2018 audited financial statements, and we have our finance director, Terry Shager, to make this presentation.
Okay.
First time on Facebook club. I told my kids to tune in.
You were famous, my friend. You are famous.
What you have here, good evening, Mayor. Welcome, Chris and council. We brought the audit to the finance committee in January and February, and so they've seen it twice already, and went into quite a bit of detail. What you have is the June 30th, 2018 audit report from Lance Saul-Lungard, who's our auditors, and they're out of Brea. And they issued what is called an unmodified opinion on our financial statements, and so the general fund, which is our main operating fund during the year, had... The fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2018 was $4,241,302, so this is the fourth year we've been up in a row, so that's good news, of which 1,846 was non-spendable. We have $75,000 that's assigned to certain items, and then $4,164 in unassigned fund balance, which is available. Total general fund revenues, I think for the first time, were over $5 million last year, so we had $5,984,849, and expenditures were in form at $842, leaving an increase of fund balance of $247, which, great news. They also issued what's called an internal control letter where they found no findings, and then they also issued a management rep... A letter to the council stating that there were no difficulties dealing with management. We provided them with everything they asked for, and they also... If you want, I'll turn one item that's new this year, so if you... Let's turn to page in your report, it's page number... Page number 120. And that's the balance sheet, and then you can see down below where the total fund balance of the general fund, 4.2 million. We have another major fund, which is our gas tax fund, at $534,000, and then all our other fund balances was $933,000, for a grand total of $5.7 million. Page number...
Terry, before you go?
Yeah.
Is that after we have done the reservicing of Railroad Canyon?
Yes, sir.
So we've got half a million left?
In gas tax, but we've had nine months of revenue since then, so we're around $800,000.
And based on the passage of the last gas measure, what's the projection for us as far as increase in our gas tax?
It's about $190,000 a year.
In addition to?
In addition to the gas tax.
Okay. Thank you.
It's coming in rather high, so it's good. And then page 122, that's our statement of revenues and expenditures, and you can see what the mayor was talking about. If you look at the gas tax fund, which is one of the major funds we had, this is the first year we've ever had a deficit there. Well, we did railroad canyon road, we did, but... And what he's referring to is the slurry sale, which we did in the road, that's why that's negative, but we still have five... Half a million plus. We also have Measure A money for streets and roads, which is... We have approximately $400,000 there as well, so a little over a million for road maintenance, signal maintenance, and the median and the fencing. So that's where I was telling about the net change in fund balance of $247,958. But there is something new this year, and it's the governmental accounting standard board. We had to adopt GASB number 75. What that is, is the other post-employment benefit, so city employees, when they retire, if they meet criteria, get lifetime medical, but it's at the PIMCA minimum, and so I think the minimum's now is like $100 and some dollars a month, and it goes up for inflation each year. We did have one person retire at that before we switched to the minimum, and I think we're paying $300 a month now for that, so, but now we're on the minimum. So our GASB 75 liability at the end of June 30th, 2018 is $134,000. Some of my clients have $850 million OPEB liabilities, so that's $134,000, so good. And then if you want to look to the budget in actual, that's on page 47. You can see what a tremendous job I did budgeting expenditures. Budgeted $4.849 million and spent $4.842 million for a $6,000 difference, so it's pretty darn good, so. Any questions?
Good job.
Counsel, questions? No questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Terry, thank you, seriously, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Okay. A motion? Any public comments?
Do you have a comment for Mr. Zeitz?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
I haven't been here this year, so I'm taking them all out.
We miss you. You haven't been here.
Sir, you're lying well. This is an article from the Friday Flyer that the city produced. It's answers to Measure S, and the question is, is Measure S fiscally accountable? Yes, Measure S will continue to require independent annual audits that keep city spending transparent and ensure funds are spent effectively and efficiently. When I read this document, cured my lack of sleep, there are two mentions of the use It lists that there's $1 million on that page, and it lists it under the pie chart, if you could kind of read whatever color it is. I have no clue. So the question that I have for the city is, there's only one annual audit that I know of. That's this one, unless there's another one, Terry, that you can talk about, but that there's a... An annual audit that the spending is transparent and ensures funds are effectively and efficiently paid. Where is the audit that shows how much money was paid out of that? Other than $1 million received, where did it go? Then there's also another question. Does Measure S maintain local control? Yes, by law, no Measure S funding can be taken by the state. All funds are required to be spent on voter-approved local issues. Voter-approved local issues. I believe $118,000 was spent for wrought iron fencing on railroad canyon road that came out of the funds, the general funds. How do we know, Terry, when the money comes out of the general funds and the use tax is put into the general funds, how much is the... Out of the use tax? That wasn't voted on by the people, so you know, it's a political thing, and I guess during elections, people aren't supposed to tell the truth, and I don't see any truth in those two statements. You do not have an annual audit unless you can show me, and I would request a public records request for that annual audit that you have for the last three years since we've had the... We had that, and how you can differentiate between the two, because I don't think you can, and I don't think you even try.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other comments? Okay.
Oh, no other comments, I'm sorry.
No other comments, okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the financial statements and the audit for 2017 and 18, please? Motion?
I move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
For item seven. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item seven with Mayor Protem Aaron Cran's absent.
Okay. Item number eight, that's the first reading of ordinance number 180, and would you read the ordinance title, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 180, an ordinance of the City of Canyon Lake, adding chapter 8.40, establishing and providing for a commercial, industrial, and multifamily rental life safety building and occupancy inspection program and providing a fee therefore.
Okay. Counsel, questions?
I had a lot of questions.
Okay.
Who am I directing them to?
They'll actually go to me, because I'm probably the source expert on this part, so go ahead.
Okay. In reading this, I had... Actually, I had quite a few questions, and I had asked staff some of them yesterday, but they were unable to give me answers, such as what conversations have had, have taken place regarding this with the POA, with CAL FIRE?
Okay.
Do you want me to go through all my questions, or do you...
Well, let's go one at a time.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go into question number one. Discussions with CAL FIRE and discussions with the POA. I did have a brief discussion with the general manager of the POA several months ago about us proposing to start doing our inspections, but to date, as far as the specifics of it, not. Currently, CAL FIRE has, because we have as a city, allowed them to adopt our fire code for us. We're hoping to get our fire code back. One of the things that is required by state law now, under the Health and Safety Code, is that the occupancies R1s and R2s are annually inspected, which currently aren't being done. That's hotel, motel, condominiums, and apartments, because the largest loss of life, based on all the... There's been about 2,800 people die annually, it's way down now. Most of them die in those occupancies. That means that an inspection program is supposed to be done annually, as well as reported to the council. What I've... Okay. That's that one. I don't want to go any farther.
So that was in response to the POA?
In response to the POA and response to CAL FIRE, we asked them if we could actually start an inspection program, and they said, sure, as long as you pay for our inspectors. And I said we want to do it in-house with, obviously, you can understand why, the cost savings, and at that time, they said no, and that frankly, they didn't have staff to do what we would consider even a ninja company inspection, because they don't do that any longer either. So our community's been lacking this service for our citizens, for our businesses, and for those who visit for a long time.
So CAL FIRE was supposed to be doing this and just was not doing it?
Is not doing it.
But we were paying for them to do it, or not paying for them to do it?
We are not paying them for their fire prevention.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may ask, in that regards, do we have a cost on how much they were charging us if we would implement use their process?
No, we didn't, but you end up... It's a full-time employee with full benefits, that's how they do it. We felt that we could do a part-time inspector of some form that has that experience that would come in, could even be retired, because we don't have that large amount of occupancies, and the follow-ups could be done by code enforcement.
So that leads me to my next question regarding the safety specialist.
Yes.
This looks like a chief building official. Would that be through our code enforcement and special enforcement?
Yes.
And then, sorry. According to the definition, it says this is a trained person. Do our code enforcement currently have this training, or would they need to be trained? And what does that entail?
The code enforcement folks we have currently do not have that expertise. We would hope, as I said earlier, to bring someone in that has that experience, that you can either do it through a contract service, there's several out there, or you can actually put out and have someone come in and work on a part-time basis. The code enforcement could be brought up to speed. The actually, as most fire enforcement folks have a fire marshal, in our case, our city, our fire marshal or his or her designated would be the building official, so we can enforce the codes under that umbrella.
Under our interwest contract?
Interwest is just a contract service for us. They could provide that service. We also have the option of seeking outside consulting if we need to.
Okay. Another question I have, is this pertains to multifamily residential units? I don't really have apartments in Canyon Lake, but I noticed that it did not apply to duplexes, which we do have.
It does... It does apply to duplexes.
It said it didn't.
Okay. Duplex, I'm not... I didn't look at the link. It may be just because duplexes are two, it's got to be three or more, and obviously, if we branched our services out to a voluntary program, we could include duplexes, of course. And we have some other things that we've talked about. If there are rentals, of what would be required to have a rental, and to follow through with making sure that the smoke detectors work, if they've got CO monitors work, as a rental agreement aspect, but currently, none of that's in place.
Okay. As to section B, where it speaks as to the notice requirements for the annual inspection, it talks about personally delivering, mailing, or emailing written notice. It doesn't speak to any type of confirmation of receipt, but then later in the ordinance, it discusses if the annual inspection does not occur, is there any kind of confirmation of notice or receipt or scheduling, because it almost looks like it penalizes individuals who are not, I would say, properly noticed, that someone's going to come by for an inspection, especially if it pertains to their residence.
Our intent was not to put a penalty phase on until everyone was duly noticed. Our first blush was to get an information letter out to all of the folks that would be following into the inspection program. That includes all the occupancies we got in the center, as well as those. We have nine mandatories in the... In our community, that includes the motel and some other things. So the idea would do the notices, we would do our due diligence, not to be on a penalty phase, or trying to get an information phase going, and then I think what it was referencing, if in fact we got down to the point that somebody was ignoring the notifications, then we would put some process in to make them come forth and comply with inspections, understanding 99% of the people, they have no problem with the inspection, the other 1% may, just because of it is government, it does have some enforcement issues with it, but our entire goal here is not so much for the enforcement, is to ensure that the things that are put in place for safety, exiting, crowding, devices such as hood systems, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, extinguishing systems are maintained, sprinkler systems are maintained, serviced, and kept in a form as they were designed to use, instead of what sometimes happens as an occupancy changes. They may lock the exits because they don't want people to come in, so for us to ensure that we have the safest community we possibly can through this process, I think it's a benefit for all of us.
Okay. Section D references... Well, let me talk about C first. Section D talks about fees set by the city by resolution, and discusses the requirement that there is an annual inspection, and then the next sentence talks about no fee if there is no inspection, so how does that get reconciled where it's a requirement, but there are... There's language that it may not occur in that annually, or I mean, how are we scheduling residences in one half of the... one half of the year or in businesses in another, or how's that going to work?
The ideal, the vision we have, remember, this is our first cut at this, to get it out. This is only, this is phase one of four phases to implement the program. So, if, by law, if you do not do an inspection, you can't charge. And we can't set an expectation of, either we are in or we're out. So, once we set up the inspection criteria and protocols, then we do the due diligence of notification, visiting, setting the date for the inspection so they well know. And then, if an inspection does not occur for some reason, then we cannot charge a fee.
Okay. And then, I think the biggest question I had about this ordinance was section D of that same, what annual inspection requires. Section D discusses owners who fail to permit the inspection, shall be guilty of an infraction or a misdemeanor.
Yes.
Which seems problematic. And, and then, doesn't give any kind of method in which that's going to be determined.
Okay, that is a kind of a boilerplate statement, I'll call it. And that is, when you get an occupancy that does not, for whatever reason, does not want to comply, they've been on due notice, we've notified them that they should have an inspection, they need an inspection. What that leads to is an inspection warrant, which is meaning that they're, for some reason, they're denying access. And so, that is the process they're referring to. So, I'm not sure, the language, I believe the language came out of another ordinance, and that's kind of how it was stated. But our intent, again, is not to, and use the gavel, as I say, the hammer to cause enforcement. Our job is to try to make the people understand why we're doing it, not to make it so apparent, negative in, in the aspect of what we're trying to accomplish, and try to cover the occupancies that we may have the highest frequencies of loss in our community. We are not immune in this community from any loss of any type. We are, in some form or fashion, as liable of not doing the inspection as we would be doing the inspection. Just because we aren't doing it doesn't give us immunity that we can't be held accountable. So, I think on the best judgment side, I feel that for us as a community to start moving towards instituting this inspection program, it will take time. It will take some time for us to get all the things in place, get our forms in place, get all the right things in place so it could be rolled out. But in order for us to even move forward, we have to have an ordinance that gives us that, that ability.
And I don't want you to mistake my questions to mean that I don't believe this is a, this is not a worthwhile endeavor. I just would say that I'm not necessarily comfortable with the language as written, and in light of the fact that we do have a new city manager, it would be my recommendation or suggestion that this be directed to staff for further.
And what would you recommend them to do?
Further vetting of the language. I mean, I think, I don't, I don't know that you've answered all my questions, to be honest, so that would be my recommendation.
So, you wanted to, okay, I got you.
Mayor, if I may. I completely understand why this is on the agenda tonight, and that's obviously because currently, we're not doing anything about something that needs to be done. I think everyone here agrees that we have to be as business-friendly as we possibly can. And with that said, have we looked at a way of making this part of our business license process? Have we thought of different angles in which, hey, look, you know, you're already coming to us to reapply for your new business license, we've got to check off one more box to make sure that you're applicable in this regards? Have we thought of that as well?
Yes, we have. There is a community that's adjacent to us, the city of Paris. Currently does annual inspections. And they have it hooked to their, tied into their business license. When the business owner comes in, applies for their business license, they're on a schedule, and then, in that annual cycle, they know that they will be, be inspected. So, yes, that, that is a part. But again, we're, we're trying to catch us up on where we haven't been. We needed to obviously have some, some ordinance on the book. I do recommend to city staff and to council that we strongly look to taking our fire code back from Cal Fire, which will be coming up in the next several months.
Point of clarification with staff, in passing of this ordinance, what does that do? Is that further research? Does that allow us to do what Casey suggested in regards to going out and maybe getting letters and recommendations from the POA, even, you know, chambers of commerce, Cal Fire? What does it do tonight if, if this thing passes? What's the next step?
Staff would recommend that at this point, we maybe table this for the next meeting. In the meantime, staff will go back and work with city attorney and get some more specific answers to questions. We think there's value in this, and we think that it can be implemented, but we just want to make sure that we've dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. But we recommend not passing it unless you're ready to implement within 30 days.
Well, I, I could say that for us to implement it in 30 days is going to be very difficult because of several things. One, we do not have an internal tracking system. Two, we do not have the appropriate paperwork or the fee structure in place, which takes a minimum of 30 days or, or two months. Three, we actually lack some of the enforcement capabilities that we need. So, I would say, even if we did the first reading on this with the understanding that obviously, some language needs to be adjusted with it to maybe handle Councilman Castillo's concerns, with the understanding that the second reading maybe have that, may have that improved language. It is by no means being passed at this point, it's just the first reading.
Sorry, my, my button is backwards. So, it says it's off, but it's on. Mayor, if, if we're going to have substantive changes between the first reading and the second reading, I would recommend to follow the city manager's recommendation, which is to give us two weeks to do a first reading in two weeks with newly revised language. Some of the council members' points made about this language are well-taken, you know, for example, section D, the intent is for that to be a wobbler. So, it should probably be, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, but maybe charges an infraction at the discretion of the city attorney. That would be typical language for something like that. So, that's an example.
Okay.
But I think in two weeks, on the legal side, we can certainly work with the city manager to get a lot of these concerns addressed, and you would have a new ordinance to look at for first reading in two weeks.
Okay, that, that, it's fine. I want to make sure that the intent here is not to provide us with additional enforcement in a negative way, but I would, would not want to stand up like the city of Oakland or some of the other places that we've encountered that have had difficulties with some of their entertainment places that have had overloading and then had, had a tragic event because people can't get out the exit because there's just too many. So, that's our intent, as well as trying to meet state mandates. State mandates are not being met now. It is a requirement out of the Health and Safety Code, and that section is thirteen, 146.2 Alpha. And it mandates inspections to be completed, actually, and it is a Health and Safety Code standard. So, anyway, it's been passed by the state. I think we cannot, I mean, we're going to have to address these. We have other occupancies in our community that do need to be addressed, our entertainment facilities, restaurant facilities. We have several schools that have, that just need to have an inspection to make sure that they're, they're doing the things they need to do. So, I agree with you. If the language has and needs to be cleaned up, then let's, let's do that. Because I, I want everyone to feel comfortable with the intent, with what we're trying to accomplish, and what our end result would be, and, and the idea that we all work together with that. So, I meant that for you guys, if you want to send it back to staff and let them rework it with maybe input from those who have, obviously Casey's got a little bit different background than I do. I come from an enforcement side, but legality side is usually written by an attorney. So, but I agree, but I want, I want everybody to know that we do have certain things within our community that must be in compliance with the state, period. And that is hotels, motels, condominiums, and apartments. They, we left some other ones out, but that doesn't preclude us as an agency and as a city to include those others in. Now, somebody had said, well, what about if we do a voluntary home inspections as a kind of a, an outreach? You know, somebody says, hey, come by my house and take a look. Maybe not. But some people do.
They volunteer.
Some people do, and some, some places do that as a, a community service. Some fire departments do put in smoke detectors because they literally can't. So, some of the things that we need in built-in systems and things that are, I can tell you, the number one thing that you find in most houses and most apartments is that when the battery goes dead in the smoke detector or starts beeping, what's the first thing they do? Takes the battery out and they forget about it. Our job is not to take the battery off, it's to remind them that they either need a new smoke detector or a new battery. And, you know, there's an old saying, change the clock, change the battery. We could even institute that program. And, and honestly, some goodwill can come out of this. It's just, I just think that we're, we've kind of gotten behind the curve, and maybe just because of where I've come from is why I want to bring it to the forefront, and I would rather be informed than I'm not, so.
And I, I wholeheartedly agree with the intent of this.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. So, so going back to our motion, I guess, it will go back to staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could recommend, if we could have a motion to continue this to the next meeting, and then I think we can come back with some language that'll satisfy these questions.
So, so the next meeting, not two weeks from now?
Correct, the next meeting.
Okay. Great. What I, what I would propose, Mr. Man, Mr. Manager, is that maybe in that month's time, a couple of other pieces of this whole process could be maybe rolled out at that time so our council could see, and maybe some of our citizens could see what the next phases are going to be, because it is going to take some time to put all that together. And obviously, we like the input from our folks, and please, we're here to help you and make sure something bad happened to you. So, with that, we'll take that back to you and we'll move this to the next council meeting.
We do have a public comment on this item, so I think we should allow Mr. Zetz to make his comments.
All right.
No, I had to run down or down.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I put down eight instead of seven, I changed that.
Okay.
Okay, I do, I guess we, Jack, have you got a comment?
Yes, I'm really glad to see you doing it. Both Mayor Green and myself come from safety programs. And I think it's very important that you people are working on this and coming up with something that'll be helpful. I know, and with reference to inspections, it might be something to consider that we have a lot of retired firemen here that have a lot of experience. And I think you could probably find, and I'm not applying for the job. I'm too old. But I know we have some younger guys that have, you know, 20, 30 years of inspections. And it is a worthwhile project. I can remember once in Pico Rivera, and I had to inspect a house and found there were 10 people living in a two-bedroom house. And no way are they going to get out of that house without somebody being killed. So, it's important that we don't let things like that happen in our community, and I'm glad to see you putting something together. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I guess, Clerk, you got any other public comments on this?
No other comments, Mayor.
None, okay.
I, I, I would make a motion to...
To, to continue.
Continue.
Yeah. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, will be moved to the next council meeting with cleanup language. Okay. City manager's comments.
Just glad to be here, sir.
Next month, you'll have more. That's all right. We know, yeah. Okay. Now, this is committee and council reports, just to remind everybody, and I think everybody up here will know, but we have a clock and it's called three minutes. And so, you have three minutes to talk about your month's activities that you were involved with. So, Councilmember Bonner.
All right, my agency that I liaison with, it's the RCDC, Riverside County, County Transportation. And they have two new programs that I hope the citizens of Canyon Lake will get excited about. One is called slash reboot my computer, and they're going to look at for the strategy set for the next 10 years. And they're going to do it different than an agency normally does. They're going to actually go to the citizens themselves, and they're going to have a combinations of a website, they're going to have a telephone that you can call, and there's going to be towns, all meetings, okay? And it has to do with any people that drive on highways, they participate in the trains or buses or any of the services, and what is the need of the cities that need to support the transportation? If you look at, other than public safety, transportation is probably the biggest issue in Riverside County. There's so much activity in the county, it can get bigger and bigger. And so, now, we're going to take a fresh look at this thing, and we're going to look at it as a overall program, and it's going to be the strategy for the next 10 years. So, I'm going to ask, and if you, the package, if you don't have it, I'll send it to you. We'll have copies up at the city hall, and people can stop by and take a look at it. And I have, hope they'll get it active, involved, and include City Canyon Lake and with all the other cities that are going to be there, okay? That's one thing. The other thing, which was just announced today, that's kind of exciting, probably not just for us, but now, they have got approval from the California Transportation where they're going to have a rail down to Co- 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 Co-Tel and the pass. And it's going to be the first time that's, they've been talking about this in RCDC for all the people that are on the desert, been talking about this for a long time, because when they have the festas and, and all those concerts and what have you in the Co-Tel jail area, they haven't been able, people haven't been easy to get to the, the past that they have. So, now, they're going to have this rail. They won't have it in 2019, but they feel that we can have it by 2020. So, it's an exciting new program, and I hope you'll feel the same as all the people in the desert are thinking about it, because they're not going to have the same type of transportation we have in Western Riverside County. So, it's pretty exciting. So, that said?
That's it. Casey?
Well, I was honored to make a presentation to the Canyon Lake Emergency Preparedness Committee on a topic related to communications in crisis. Unfortunately, my PowerPoint had some technical difficulties, but I did have my nine-year-old son available, and he came up and ran my whole presentation for me. So, slightly embarrassing, but I had my own backup plan for preparedness. I've been busy with water events. I've attended the Ledgewood meeting, and that was very eye-opening. We heard a great presentation from Lake Elsinore related to the holy flood and burn area runoff, which was very enlightening. Also, we have been attending the meetings myself and Mr. Wamsley, along with members of the POA, because we are in the grant application process, hopefully to get some type of funding for dredging, which I know is very important to our community. The next meeting for that, I am told, is coming up. April 13th? Nine o'clock. I will be there, I'm sure you will be there. We will all be there, and with our fingers crossed that we may...
We will all be there, and with our fingers crossed that we make it to the next round for the grant application. I know that it is kind of a long shot for us because of the requirements. It's a very detailed process, and we did go and listen to about 30 presentations, all with very deserving projects, but obviously fingers crossed for ours. Additionally, I've learned that our next alum treatment is scheduled for potentially either the week of the 25th of this month, or whether interfering would be April 15th. As you may know, there is a requirement that there'd be no rain predicted because of the runoff issues. We obviously don't want our precious alum to go into Lake Elsinore because it flows over into the dam. So, I will continue to monitor that and keep informed. And then lastly, what I wanted to mention was, yesterday we had, I thought, a very productive public safety meeting and a great conversation with Lieutenant Sims, and I appreciated that very much. We didn't talk about maybe getting a more in-depth report from RSO, and I was grateful for your back and forth in exchange with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jeremy?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for bearing with us, we appreciate it. Casey, you mentioned you're busy with water. I think everyone in this room's been busy with water in the last few months, with all the water that we're getting in the lake and the rain. I know for me, I finally found a window to mow my lawn, and it was, it took me longer than it should, but the wife had a good laugh. So, I get the opportunity to sit on RTA, which is Riverside Transportation Agency, and I like to call it all things as public transportation. And, you know, it's a very unique board, there's a lot going on, and anytime government takes a stance in regards to technology, I get excited. And RTA has finally done that. What they're looking at is a program called Token Transit, which is an app that allows you to now use the bus and give you routes and information and delays and everything on your mobile device. So now you no longer have to carry a card around. Keep in mind, you can still take the bus, and it only costs you $1.50 to get to Oceanside. So it's pretty incredible when you think about it. I used to take the bus all the time when I lived in Hemet, and from what it's come from then to now is just unbelievable with the technology. We were able to tour the facilities this weekend in our new director training, and it's just, it's just incredible. And if anyone wants the information on that, if you want to take a look at it, get an in-depth on what we're doing with RTA in Riverside, I'm pretty proud to be on that board and see the things that they're doing. As most of you know, we have a joint POA city council meeting, March 26th, that's going to be at 6:00 o'clock. We're excited about that. We're very thankful that the board has agreed, along with this council as well, to come together and discuss some of the issues. The first meeting's just going to be a formality, you're going to get a chance to see what the two boards do and possibly how we can work together, but I'm really excited about that. Lastly, we had our finance meeting on Tuesday, and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of concerns, a lot of issues moving forward, but with our new city manager, we're going to be able to tackle those, tackle some of those issues that we have, and we're brainstorming on some new things, and I think our partnership with the POA is really going to help that. So, I'm excited to be up here. I know that this is a very dynamic council, and we're working hard to not only serve the community, but think outside the box. So, once again, thanks, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity, and I'm beyond blessed. Hope everyone has a good evening, and thanks for coming out.
Okay, that leaves me. It's been a busy month for us, in the process which we have talked about, was the hiring of the city manager, the process that we've been doing this month, from the interviews to the testing process, to the negotiation process, to finalizing the contracts, to you name it. So, for those of us on council, we've been here pretty much most of the last several months. So, welcome. One of the things that RCAM, I sit on the executive board as well as the, the regular board, and we've been talking about environmental issues that are impacting our area, and believe it or not, mountain bikes are becoming part of our problems in our areas. Down in the city of Marietta, they have a probably extensive trail up behind Greer Ranch, and what's happened is these bike clubs are coming in from all over California, and all over the nation to ride their bikes. They're, they're really, not destroying, but damaging the hillsides and stuff because they're putting in jumps and stuff. So they're trying to curb that back. Well, what's happened is because they're doing active enforcement, we're starting to see those activities show up in other areas, other areas in rural Riverside County that you're seeing HOVs, you're seeing more, more bikes, and so it's becoming a county-wide issue, so they're going to try to see what they can do. We hosted a citizens' emergency response training program last weekend, city staff, plus 17 community members were involved. It's a 20-hour course, three days, and welcome to all those that attended, well-received by all of our folks. Our student of the month, I was, had the pleasure of presenting that gentleman with a certificate down Lake Elsinore. We will be honoring him at the joint meeting as one of our recipients of honor. And kind of last is that I had the opportunity to sit with the governor. It was an invitation, and it was because of some of our current elements that we have in our housing that need to be upgraded or updated. So, it was interesting to meet with other cities that are in the same situation as we are. Found the governor very informative, also very intense on what he wants to do as far as our housing crisis in California, being that we are Canyon Lake and we're unique, we're not immune from the rules that the state of California passes through to general law cities, and housing element is one of them. Good news is, we had already, prior to that notification, had seeked out to our previous consultant, and they're in the process now of moving forward to updating our housing element, to bring it into compliance. With that, if we meet the compliance and the deadlines, we will be able to be in line for approximately $125,000 for grant funding from the state housing authority for specifically planning, meaning that documents that we do such as zoning and other things that have been somewhat out of compliance just because of our city and growing and everything. So we can, hopefully if we meet all those deadlines and goals, we can come into compliance and maybe, maybe have that opportunity to offset some of those costs that we're going to have to incur no matter what happens. So, with that, it's been a good month. I'm glad you're on board, Chris, and I want to take the opportunity to thank city staff, Mike, Anna, and all the folks that filled in while we had a void. The city kept going forward, things kept, got paid. We moved, we found things that we probably didn't know were existing and have got them to the forefront. But anyway, thanks to the staff and all those who helped to this period. And with that, wait, Mr. Mayor, I think that means you can give up your keys now. Yeah, I can do that, too.
I think you can turn them over, so.
Yeah, I, I no longer have a desk, which, which believe it or not, I retired and said I would never do that again, and I did. So, with that, I'm going to make an announcement. We do have our next council meeting, which will be April 3rd at 6:30, 1830 hours for us, 2019, here? Yes?
I'm so sorry, before you adjourn this meeting, I just want to send our best wishes to Mayor Protem Aaronson. On behalf of city staff, he said he would be watching tonight, so Mayor Protem, if you're watching, we miss you tonight, and we hope that you have a very speedy recovery and that you're here soon to provide your vector reports, because we definitely missed that tonight.
We missed it.
We missed it. And we would also just like to say thank you to you, Mayor. You've been amazing, and your support over this last month while we didn't have a city manager has been amazing, and so we really like to thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. We will adjourn the meeting at 1949 hours.
Mayor, and you will now recess to close session.
Now we will recess to close session.